Good afternoon, everyone. Three o'clock, and we have a forum. So we will start our meeting. Before we start our road call, we have an attorney's day. Attorney Ryan, he's filling in for Mr. Hanson. I don't anticipate any need to wish him to come up today. He will have to divide us on it, but we still need representation. We're happy that he made the journey down from, I assume, the Jodiette area. So that out of the way, I'd like to have a road call meet.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Vice Chair Parks? Commissioner Obolski?
Here.
Commissioner McFarland?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Turnbull? Commissioner Salem?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Can we get a motion and a second for approval of the agenda for today?
Second.
And probably move to the second road call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obolski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Are there any public comments on the agenda items? No public comments on the agenda items, so we'll move right to approval of the minutes from the July 25, 2024 meeting. Approval or motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Probably move to the second. Road call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obolski?
I would vote yes. I wasn't present until July 25th. Should I say?
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Approval of minutes?
Do I know?
Approval of minutes for July 25th.
Sorry, Chairman. Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Okay, we're down to five. Item five already. We need to have a presentation. See You at Home presentation right at the Mid Barrier Shelter.
All right, so we are going to have a presentation on the Mid Barrier Shelter program. I know I have spoke to the board about this a few times. It's also in our MTW plan to partner with See You at Home on the development of a Mid Barrier Shelter. So Melissa, the executive director from See You at Home is here, and she's going to give us a presentation on what the program is.
All right, thank you so much for having me. I'll be presenting first half of the PowerPoint, and then my co-presenter, I've seen Lily, will also be presenting some information today. At any point, you know, you have questions about the program after the day, please feel free to just ask me. I'll, of course, do my best to answer any questions that you might have. Again, we're just so thankful for your partnership and for Lily's leadership in working with us through the process to expand our Mid Barrier Shelter program. All right, and I'm also going to try to effectively use this clipper. So several years ago, See You at Home was the low-barrier service provider in the county, and there had been some changes to what we do as an organization. And so we have since December of 2022 been the mid-barrier service provider for Champaign County. And so what that means is that when clients come into our program, it's more of a process that they have to go through. There's things that they have to agree to and commitments that they need to make to be part of our program. So when we ran the low-barrier service prior to December of 2022, what we learned from running that program was that there were some people who were not yet ready to make changes out of homelessness, and that happens for a variety of reasons. But there was a group that would come to the low-barrier shelter that really wanted case management, and they really wanted to learn about how they could get out of the circumstances that they were in. And what we found was when we put everybody together into one congregate shelter, the people that wanted to make changes oftentimes found themselves kind of going back down through the least common denominator. So if you can imagine that a person that's coming into that congregate shelter that is just a step into their sobriety or newly unemployed or addressing their mental health issues for the first time, and inside that congregate shelter there's a large part of that population that is not ready to do that. They find themselves in a very, very vulnerable position and circumstance. And oftentimes, again, they would fall back into not addressing their mental health, losing the job, not addressing their sobriety, those kinds of things. So what we realized we had the opportunity to do was to create something where the community of people that were ready to make change could be together. And so that really is what the Mid Barrier Program is kind of the heart behind the Mid Barrier Program. We also, as part of our overall services to the community, have what we call advanced shelter services as well. So if somebody goes through the Mid Barrier Program, what we call phases one through three, they have an opportunity to graduate from the Mid Barrier Program into advanced shelter. So another thing that we've learned as we've been providing this program is that even once you have completed a lot of tasks in our addressing mental health and have maybe a year of sobriety, launching into your own place can often be difficult. For some of our clients, it isn't, and they're ready after those first three phases to integrate into the community and to their own place, which is wonderful. And we use the voucher system to make that happen. But there are some clients that even with some sobriety and some level of employment or income are not ready for community integration. And so we offer advanced shelter services as well. So in order to get into our program, the Mid Barrier really is the entry point. It's the beginning of our program. And so everybody who comes into the See You at Home Pathways for Progress Program starts at the Mid Barrier level. In order to do that, clients must complete an intake. So again, that's one of the differences between, for example, low-barrier and mid-barrier services. Clients are required to provide information. They are required to complete an intake. They're required to agree to work with the case management team and to address instability points that may have led them into the circumstances that they find themselves in. So that is all something that happens prior to the person being admitted into the program. So with intake, we're asking questions about mental health, substance use, physical capabilities, criminal background, those kinds of things. Just because a person has, obviously, issues with mental health, issues with substances, does not mean that they can't be in our program. In fact, most of our clients have those issues. But what it allows us to do is to really help our clients. We cannot help you if you do not tell us what your issues or concerns are. We can't help you if you're not honest with us about your past drug use or current drug use. And so again, those things don't mean that you cannot get into the shelter, but we are looking for people to answer those questions. We're looking for motivation for change and honesty in those areas. So when somebody goes through that intake process and they come into our program, we offer intensive services. We have found that it's very important that the clients we serve have certain levels of intensity in our program to move them forward. And so each client is assigned to a case management team that consists of a case manager and a care coordinator. They have to read contacts with that team a week. One of those contacts is, you know, usually about an hour-long meeting. We are going on our goals. We are going on our barriers. It's a pretty intense meeting. And then the two touchpoints after that are checking in. So if we've set a goal, for example, that you need to have a mental health assessment, if that's something we did at that hour-long meeting, then we're going to be touching base with you throughout the week to see how that's going. So for example, later in the week, if someone still hasn't made the phone call to set up an appointment, we may ask them, what are the barriers? Do you need assistance? Can we help you make that call? So those are things that are happening. Again, that's just one example of mental health that is happening in a variety of areas for that program each week. In addition to the case management team, we have a life skills staff that are actually in the Mid Barrier Homes 24/7. And so if they don't have an upcoming meeting or touchpoint with their case manager, there's a life skills staff person available 24/7 to assist the clients or to determine if case management needs to be contacted immediately if there's a circumstance or situation that would warrant that. So again, a lot of intensive services, a lot of assistance in the program. We do operate using trauma-informed care. We do want our clients to be co-creators with us in this process. And so while we do have structure to the program and while we do have goals that clients need to meet, we also work with our clients to determine what are your goals? And anytime a client can have voice and choice, we absolutely want them to exercise that. So the program is built on four phases. The first three phases, Mid Barrier 1, 2, and 3, are what will take place essentially in the Madison property that I'm talking with you about today. The Phase 4 part of the program will take place, again, in those advanced shelter homes. Each of the phases is progressive. For example, Phase 1 is pretty task-intensive. What we really want people to do in the first phase is to start to feel safe, to acclimate to the house, but then also to complete some tasks and goals. And then as they go through the program in Phases 2 and 3, the goals and tasks get harder. And one of the things we're really looking for is consistency. So for example, go back to the mental health example. If you scheduled your mental health assessment and you went to that appointment, and as a result of that appointment, you learned that you had a mental health diagnosis that required you to take medication. And for many of our clients, that's not something they have done consistently before. So what we're going to be looking for is for you to be taking that medication consistently. If it was recommended that you go to counseling as part of that mental health assessment, we're going to be looking for you to consistently go to counseling. So again, we're not just looking at tasks completed. We're looking at consistency. Because in one sense, it's easy to go to a mental health assessment and not follow the recommendation. Right, did that check that box? I went to that assessment. But we need to see you following through, and we need to see consistency in those areas. All right, substance abuse recovery is one of the focuses of our program because three-fourths of our clients do have some sort of substance abuse issue and are often in recovery. And so we do make that focus point of the services that we provide. Mental health is another focus point of services that we provide because, again, most of our clients have unaddressed or underaddressed mental health issues. Most of the time, these substance abuse and mental health issues coexist. And so again, it's very important for a person to have stability to have those foundational goals met to be addressing their needs and recovery and their needs in the mental health area. Another one of our focus points is physical health needs. And so people who have experienced homelessness also have oftentimes chronic health issues that they have not addressed or have not consistently addressed. And so we do require that they get a primary care physician. We require that, again, they follow through with the recommendations of a primary care physician. We need to obtain a dentist, which is not always easy. But that is something that we ask them to do. Financial health, obviously, huge part of instability for a lot of our clients. And so that is something that we do address. They are required to make a budget and make a list of bad debts. We're working with UC Bank right now to get some financial health courses in place for our clients. They need to demonstrate that they can consistently save money. So in order, for example, to go from Phase 3 to Phase 4, a client has to show consistent savings up to at least $1,000. And that's set aside for them for their emergency funds. We do ask that they pay a very small amount of program fees. Again, for example, we were talking to a client earlier today. Her program fees are $5. It's really not about the amount of money. It's about the habit of consistently being responsible and paying those program fees. So we're looking far more for consistency than we are for the amount of money. Housing needs. They're required to complete a centralized intake. Required to fill out so many housing applications as they get further along in the phases. And then they also need to focus on life skills. So again, a lot of our clients have not maintained sometimes their own physical persons, sometimes their own physical space. It's not uncommon, you know, for clients to come with everything they have in a trash bag, and that's normal and how they've been maintaining their items for some time. And so, you know, hanging things in a closet, putting things in a dresser, or they have not had access to a kitchen, for example. And so just running out for, you know, going to the convenience store all the time feels very normal for them. So working on creating them in, going shopping, cleaning up after, you know, you work, and also working on that with my kids. But those are things that, you know, we want them, when they graduate from our program, to really say, like, I can make it. I have my new tracks. And that doesn't mean that they won't ever need help. When they do, they actually know who to call. When they need assistance, they know where they can go. So we do have a strong partnership right now with Drug Court. They're what we consider one of our primary partners. And so what that means for us is that oftentimes, people who are sentenced to Drug Court are experiencing homelessness. And so we know that in order for them, again, to maintain sobriety or to maintain their progress in Drug Court, they need some kind of stable housing and place to stay. So today, we have housed and worked with around 15 Drug Court clients.
Hello, again, I am Tami Lunkie, and I am happy and humbled to be part of See You at Home to lead them through this wonderful journey that we're on. But as you know, 2022, when we left, and you all know the building at 7 East Washington now, houses where See You at Home used to be. And we moved out of that building to provide the community with more expanded services for low-barrier. We moved out of there. We have been committed since that time trying to find the right location. You know, I'm probably talking to the choir here, but the right location, the right, you know, trauma-informed care, how a facility is organized is tremendous to somebody's growth and gaining their goals. Right now, and that journey continues, and we call them stopgaps in our long way. When we moved to Dallas, 7 East Washington, we were able to secure two mid-barrier homes, the residential homes. If you've seen them, there's one in Champaign and one in Urbana. They are, we are four bedroom homes, so we actually have eight clients in both of those homes. There's a woman's home and a man's home, which we found is the appropriate way to make them two different homes farther apart from each other. And those two homes have been operating for the last year and a half within communities. Several things with that. What we noticed is when we put them in the community in a home setting or in their own rooms versus condos, so they're not condos settings, they provide an opportunity for more safety and just sound, right? That's my home before I go. I don't have to lose my bet. And so we have found them to be very beneficial. We, over the course of the time that we've operated these, have had no calls from the police, to the police, from the police. Then you probably would know they were there if you go by, which is exactly what our goals are. They're just normal homes in communities. They are staffed 24/7 with what Melissa mentioned is the life skills staff. That's very important to us. We realize that when someone enters our program, it's not full force forward, right? You can go forward, you can go backwards in your sobriety or whatever else. And we want to make sure that there's people around you to support you to do that. And so we've always been on a journey to try and get to someplace close to 25 to 40 beds in the community to house our program. That's always been our initiative. Back when the low-barrier program was opening, it starts about 60. We average the need to be about 100 individuals in this homeless population, which is all different, all different needs in there. But we've always been trying to move to 40, so that's our goal. We know that, well, we've also found out with the residential homes is it's very difficult to put a lot of people in a home if you bought your own home, right? It's the sewer systems. There's a lot going on in those residential homes, so we've realized that may not be good, right? The permanent solution that has been a wonderful temporary solution for us so far. What we're looking for is an opportunity to place up to 25, 26 clients in a trauma-informed location and into the step process that Melissa explained. We also are looking for space to do the support groups. We have operated at the NA support group outside of our offensive office for the last year and a half. So it's been extremely beneficial to be collaborative between all the people that are serving people. And here's my current, our current proposal. We have been on this journey to find the right place, and we've been on this journey, Lily has partnered with us to look at properties to be there as a sounding board to say, look, how can we help? And we appreciate that very, very much from the Housing Authority. That journey has led us into seeing probably close to 20 or 25 different locations in the city because it's not easy to build or to purchase a facility of this size. We have started with our, and so we've been on this journey. Our team here has been giving a lot of information. We started with, though, trying to opt-in to build a facility, to do this. There's very, there's very specific needs in that building. We put a proposal together, and it was a proposal given to the Urbana as the council to be part of the ARCA funding. Unfortunately, we weren't awarded funding in there. But the idea of what the phase and what the house system looks like has gone through a lot of architectural and engineering reviews of what would be important. And so we're still sitting on that plan. We were looking for a facility that did. Well, about, I think, gosh, it's been several months now. Time flies in the summer around here. But we found a location that's at 1207 South Madison after many, many tours. It's about 12,000 square feet. Those people who, if you're on South Madison, it's right next to Little Caesar's. So very excited about that. And right behind us, actually, is a church, which is even very exciting about as well. Our goal, our current proposal is that we would purchase, that facility would be purchased to house the Mid Barrier Program. And that program would also include the intensive case management and support groups activities that Melissa spoke about. We're very excited also that that facility would allow to have community members as part of the solution for people. As Melissa mentioned just a minute ago, the goal of leading our program is not that you don't know your answers, but you know where to go and who you get to. And we truly believe that the more people can wrap around individuals to provide the support or family they did not have before, they might by birth, that better. So we're excited about bringing people in. And hold on, I'm going to show you the staff. What we've found out over the last 18, and almost a year and a half, is that when we segregate or diversify all of our programs or out the two cities, we lose the ability to be impactful. So it helps all of them to want to group this, if it's exciting. Oh, sorry, I'm very tense. What does it cost to make this reality? That's what everybody keeps asking us. The purchase price of the facility at 1207 South Madison is $1,225. We estimate the renovation cost to be about $650. The building we have is, it was an empty shell. Later, it was a grocery store. Or if you want to kind of visualize in your head what the structure would be. And then there's the annual operating costs of that facility. What we're excited about is the annual operating costs of the facility aren't going to be too much drastically more. It'll be above what we pay now, but not the same level because we'll be able to combine some of the practices together. What we're excited, I think we're coming here. There is not only the request of how we can partner with the Housing Authority, but we're also giving the opportunity to do a three, I would call it a three-way partnership. but we're also have a unique opportunity to do a three, I would call it a three-way partnership, I think that my voice calls it. Um but it's also an opportunity to have a lot of people in our community be part of the solution. And we found the opportunity to be with the Chicago O P O A Task Force. Um and we'll be meeting with them again this evening to be part of their answer, their solution, appeal to educate and help people. They've identified as one of the main problems with um with O P O A, the people getting better is housing. So they've identified that as one of their major concerns. And so we're finalizing our agreement with them this evening, I hope, that's our goal, we're meeting with them again. They will be part of the solution, um they have agreed to be part of the renovations of that facility. Um and we keep moving through this proposal. What we're hoping to do with here, I know we are part of the, as written, we've all read that and have been knew it. We, we just want to continue to follow through that and make it a reality. Um we are thankful that um the team here and Lily's been very flexible with the time delays that it has for us to find a building, but we just hope to solidify that partnership. We have, but I know if you have any questions, please.
Only one question I know, when we're talking about a criminal background on there, so um. I guess that's a question I don't need to ask to, I'll just ask more later, because that's not the human answer. But anyway, also being criminal background, usually you take anybody with any kind of criminal background, correct?
So what we do ask is that they haven't had a violent offense within the last um year. So if it, if it, if they've been violent in the last year, that's something that we take a really hard look at. Again, it doesn't necessarily exclude them, but we would have more questions um concerning them. And that's just for the safety of the other people in the house. So we do need to make sure and assess their safety. But if somebody has a criminal felony, again, from, you know, prior years ago, that is definitely not going to keep them in that program.
You also talked about finances, those people who are trying to get into your program. Do you identify them or how do you get people uh involved in your program?
So our um primary referral source would be Drug Port. We also work with Rosecrans. Um we have several clients right now, but we're at strides and ready to make changes. And so primarily we work with our community partners to identify people who might be ready for change or in need of our program. Uh that's, that's kind of primarily how we do it. We have from time to time have people stop by the office um and are in need of our services. That was more um early on in the program. At this point, um we primarily work through referral sources.
Yeah, I was going to say, what referral from a individual, from a family or something, maybe?
Yeah, a family could definitely call us and make a referral, or the person could call to refer themselves. Um but primarily, I think we're working through Drug Port, Rosecrans, the Pavilion, Strides, Cunningham Township, our community partners.
So not a hundred percent of the time on that, some kind of financial string coming in?
No, a lot of our clients, when they first enter our program, do not have income. And so part of what we do is assess whether or not they are employable or whether or not they should apply for something like this ability. And in either case, you know, our next step is helping them to get where they need to go. We also um have several clients currently and in the past that have been enrolled at Parkland College. And so, for example, if they're enrolled in school and don't, you know, do that rather than seek employment, we still work with them so that they can, you know, meet their educational goals.
What's the number of uh number that you work with?
So currently, right now, any one time, we have about thirty clients. And the mandatory property would allow us to expand the number of people that we serve.
So as people sort of work through the phases, if they reach a certain point, is there, is there any vouchers associated with, maybe this is a question for you. With sort of graduation from the program or is it more of a, you all help them to access resources that might be available to anybody in that type of circumstance?
Yeah, right now, it's, it's the latter. We, we help them work through, but that's something that um we've been working through with Lily, what that could potentially look like. I know there's some other community organizations that have those kinds of partnerships and we've been talking about that. It, it's honestly a huge incentive for people to know that they would have a voucher once they graduate from the program. We actually uh just had a client move from our program to the Waymore Recovery Program for that reason.
Do you find that a lot of your clients are moving into, to get a voucher on their own?
Yeah, I, I think right now graduating, like say, from phase three, it's about fifty-fifty. So we have about fifty percent of people that go into community integration. We have a lot of people that reunify with family, reunify with children, those kind of things. And then about another fifty percent want to go into our managed shelter program.
Thank you. You said you have thirty clients now, is that your max capacity or what is, what is your max capacity?
Yeah, that is our max capacity.
And you have people on waitlist, so that when you're expanding into a larger building, you already have people coming into spaces?
Yes, we, we do have a rather large waitlist. And what we actually have done currently is paused that waitlist. It got it to about sixty people. And uh honestly, we felt like it wasn't fair to tell people we would put them on a waitlist. So what we do now when people call is we work with them to find alternative solutions, just because our waitlist is so long. But we already have, again, just with Drug Port alone, um we already have clients that are waiting for beds.
How large is your staff?
I'm sorry.
How large is your staff?
It's about twenty people total. It's, it's a pretty small staff. We have um a life scale staff, again, they're in the, in the home twenty-four seven. We have our case manager team and then we have a pretty small administrative team.
Do you collaborate or work with the Rosecrans?
We do, we, Rosecrans is um one of our partners. Uh we get a lot of referrals from their substance um treatment and also from their crisis residential center. And uh the great thing about um Rosecrans is that because we are in a partnership and have that M O U, we've also had times where clients have had a crisis of some kind. And so they are able to get our clients into beds. So we prioritize each other in that way.
That's good.
Any other questions from the board? Well, thank you so much, Melissa and Tammy and Mike. It's been really great to work with you at home. And um just want to say that it's a part of just our ongoing, um our ongoing efforts as the Housing Authority to address homelessness. Um we can do, only do so much with the vouchers and with the subsidies that we offer. But as being M T W, we are able to expand our resources outward um to, to help with sheltering and, and the homeless population in the community. So you will hopefully continue to see more partnerships like this grow as our resources continue to grow, so. Thank you.
Okay, well, we're ready for a new business. We have some resolutions that we need to act on. The first resolution would be twenty twenty-four dash five approval of consulting services contract award.
We are asking the board to give us the approval to award a consulting contract to Cubit Development Group. Um we were looking for a pool, and I think they were the only ones that responded to the R F P, which is okay. Um so we're uh looking forward to uh working with this group and um just looking for some additional development consulting um so we can continue to build and expand in Champagne County. So it's not necessarily the contract yet, but it's just the approval to move forward to award the contract.
I would give a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four five.
The primary move, the second, roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarlane?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Turnbull?
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Thank you. Next uh resolution is twenty twenty-four dash six approval and ratification of an agreement with Yardi Systems Incorporated to provide housing software, software.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We are looking to change our current software. We are currently using Ten Nash, which is an M R I corporation. Uh we are having issues uh not being able to pull the information that we need. So we've looked at Yardi and we feel that Yardi is, is our best bet. So we would like to get your approval to move forward with contractor agreement with that.
Okay, any questions? I know Yardi is a, they're, they're at all of the conferences, national conferences, Nero and Fada, and they're well represented. They have the product, so uh that's just my input.
I was just curious, um there was some pocket meeting a while back about moving things to an online system. Did we do that already and it hasn't been working or is this a move to that?
These are online. Every, everything is, is online. It's, it's just that the current software just really isn't meeting our needs anymore. So we've had to look into other things and we've had conversations with other housing agencies, so. And Yardi is, has the largest part of the market for the housing software, so, so they're all over the country.
The, I would say, the overwhelming majority of rental management companies in Champagne, Champagne County, not just Champagne County, but all, almost everywhere with us to speak to here, use your, um so apartment rentals can have switched to Yardi because they've improved their product in the last five to ten years significantly.
I might add too that they have very nice giveaways at their. And they also feed you pretty good. So uh, okay, there's no further discussion. I'd like to make a motion that we, for approval in a second.
I'm going to approve resolution twenty-four dash five.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarlane?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Okay, I think the last one that we have today for the uh resolutions is twenty twenty-four dash seven approval of architect and engineering pool.
Uh this resolution, we would just say, need your approval to have a pool for architects and engineers. Um the, we are going to choose the top four scoring, uh firms. And that's in that chart that I put in the resolution for.
Motion.
I'm going to approve resolution twenty-four dash five.
Thank you. Roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarlane?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Okay, we'll turn the floor over to our executive director for her report.
Okay, um I want to first go over, because we have this on the, on the agenda under new business, but it's just to update an admin plan. I'm just getting ready to go out for public comment. And so we just wanted to discuss the changes with the board. We've gone over it before, but Jennifer's going to come up and just kind of go over some of the changes, just to refresh you off memory. And from that point, it will go out for public comment and um we will hopefully get it approved at our meeting um in October, so. Jean, do you mind going forward to the admin plan slides?
We're not there. Is it in here?
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, so um we have discussed these activities before. Our H T W plan was recently approved. And so what we're proposing now is that those activities in the H T W plan that directly impact certain parts of the administrative plan be updated. So um the main um items that we're looking to change are the alternative flat utility allowance. So we want to establish a utility allowance, one for multi-family and then one for single families. Uh we want to eliminate the utility reimbursement reimbursement, uh move up third-party requirement um to allow H A C C to conduct our own rate increases and inspections. Uh the community choice initiative, um this um H A C C will implement a small area fair market rent payment standard for census tract in certain prisons in Champagne County. So this is going to be um an initiative pretty much to allow families to live in a higher opportunity range and increase payment standards in those areas. The mandatory L S S program is an activity that's been modified to remove the term limits and instead establish a minimum income requirement um in that year eight. So instead of families being terminated on the program in year eight, families will be required to remain in their income tier. Um the tiered flat rent, minimum rent by barrel size, um just that the flat rent schedules are established on the first of each calendar year. Tenant rents are calculated as gross income, it's a deduction of allowances. The modification um is to establish a hardship policy and to modify the minimum rent to one hundred dollars. Families will pay at least a minimum of one hundred dollars per day. The local project-based voucher program. Um H A C C developed and implemented a local project-based voucher program to ensure that a very number of all units are available to low-income families throughout Champagne County. Um typically, house authority's limit for P V V is thirty percent, but we are modifying it to fifty percent um to allow us to project base at least fifty percent of our units under our E C C contract. We also added exception um to increase P V V rents up to one hundred and fifty percent of the fair market rent. Again, to allow us to increase rents as high as we can to allow more options for our families that we have. Also added alternative housing types to P V V. Um so this might include something like shared housing that um maybe we did not have before, but again, giving us more opportunities to expand housing, thinking outside the box and come up with new ways to house families. The landlord incentives. The landlords can request pre-inspect, pre-inspections now of available units. So um this will kind of help expedite our new family moving in. If landlords can call us when they know they have a unit that's becoming available, we can always inspect it, document it, and the unit can be ready for moving for new families.
I just want to say something on the pre-inspections. I think this is going to be huge. I know we've gotten a lot of requests from um, from landlords, property owners, um people in the community about, you know, feedback on why our clients lose their units, a lot of it being we can't get out to inspect it before the tenant who's currently living there leaves. And so with us being able to do these pre-inspections, it's going to be big that we can build a pool of readily available units for our clients. And so we're really excited to test this out.
As of January twenty twenty-four, if an owner has leased to a family for at least five years or more, who is that owner will now receive a loyalty incentive payment of two hundred and fifty dollars per household. Um an increased landlord incentive policy for new owners of five hundred dollars for new owners who have not participated in the program for twenty month, twenty-four months or longer, or if they are completely new landlord. And we'll also offer incentives to landlords that lease units in higher opportunity areas. Again, these are just more initiatives to um, to have more landlord participation and reward landlords for working with us and trying to get our families housed and um really get families housed in higher opportunity areas. And then the last um update is actually the non-M T W changes. This change is specific to the administrative plan and it is to reduce the criminal background look-back period from three years to six months. This is specifically for criminal activity. Um it doesn't override the look-back period for evictions or E C U mandated tortations.
Do we have any questions from the board on any of those changes?
I'm very excited, the pre-inspections especially.
Very much so. All right. I want to go into the executive director report. So first off, we have to congratulate Carlos, he's our champion of the month. Really, really, really excited about this. Carlos has been a great addition to the team. He has a positive attitude and so I'm going to ask his supervisor Tiffany to come up and say a couple of words about him.
You too, Carlos. Yeah, so if I'm here in the office, boss, 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 I know who's saying it. So, good afternoon, board. Um I want to say that, you know, the champion of the month is a great idea for our agency to recognize our um staff that we have working with us. We could not do it without them. Um our leadership is one thing, but we do have our hands and people on the ground doing it. And Carlos does represent that type of uh person. He jumps in wherever needed and always is trying to assist. He is one of those kind of people who um just get the job done kind of individual. No fluff, no talking and, you know, visiting. He's really one of those people on the task, about the business. And uh again, occasionally we get a laugh in his time. And also uh his experience of being bilingual as well helps us with our community of Spanish-speaking families um who, you know, otherwise would have to wait a while to get a translator and things of that nature. We have someone on staff that uh helps in the interim, in the beginning of the process and the families feel comfortable uh with him being on board with us. So I am so happy to have Carlos on the team. He really is a great asset. Thank you, Carlos.
Congratulations, Carlos.
So good afternoon, everyone, good afternoon, fore, uh, well, this is like, I don't know, something they just, I was not like in my calendar for today. I just want to say thank you. I'm very proud just to be here and try to prove that the decision to be here was the right one. Like I said, I'm here to help, that's my only commitment, try to see people get out of this building with a huge smile. So that's basically my commitment and thank you so much.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you very much, Carlos.
We have a party to, 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 and a party.
Next slide, please. All right, wanted to shout out a couple of new positions, not necessarily new hires. One is not a new hire, but new in the role. Um so first, Latricia Johnson is uh moving on from her role as property manager onto our new housing services coordinator. So in this role, she'll be working hand in hand with Jennifer, uh working on some community initiatives and uh working with residents and really working to just really try to get our resident services and our community services program back on track. So we're so excited to have her and we know it's going to be great. So congratulations, Latricia, on your, on your change in role. And also we have a new communications coordinator who's just started with us, Peyton in the back. So all it is, all this new communications and these pretty flyers and, and billboards and everything that you all see going along as Peyton's working, she's working with Jorina, so they've been doing an awesome job and it's great to have her on board, so welcome Peyton. And congratulations, Latricia. All right, so exciting news, we closed on the Heska Boulevard building on August fourteenth. Um and so it's a really, really beautiful space. Um and we are excited to get some minor renovations done, just painting flooring. Um and so uh we've been over there a couple of times so far and just um working on developing this into our new workforce development center where we'll be hosting a lot of community training, a lot of um programming around, um you know, the big, small business program and then different things like that. And so we're excited to close on this space. And I took Dr. Henry over there this morning and I would love to take any of the board members who are interested in going, just let me know and I will take you there so you can see the inside.
I think it's an awesome uh addition to our, to our process here that we're doing. And I think it's going to pay great dividends in the long run in terms of our expansion. And I think everybody that's going to be working in that building are going to be really pleased with the out, with the layout. And I was really, really excited when I went through the day. I was running pretty bubbly and uh I shared my, my feelings with the, with the executive director. And I think it's really, really great. We're going to really grow and blossom.
I think it's, it's a great um, a great opportunity for us to continue to grow. Uh I mean, just the board members who have walked around the office, you can see how crowded we are in this space. Got people in blue closets to make sure that we can get everybody their own space. But also kind of separate the housing, and not separate it because we're all one, but kind of build a next steps program for our clients. So they're getting their housing assistance here, they're getting that first step, that, that assistance that they need to get stable. And then the next step for them is to really get into some of the workforce program so we can transition them off of housing assistance. And so it's really a great next step for us and so we're super, super, super excited about it. All right, some other activities and updates. Um you all have in your folder the results of our compliance monitoring review. Um we did let you all know back in, um was it March, May? Not March, May. Back in May, um HUD did have a visit with us where they did a compliance monitoring review. And so out of that compliance monitoring review, there were only two findings, so not too bad. And I think one of them, we were able to resolve while they were here, Jennifer.
So um, one of them we did and they took it off of this. These two are still.
Okay.
But um, so the first one actually, so we recently implemented this, this debt recovery program. It's with a, a comptroller and it is fairly new. And because it's new, we're still kind of working through the procedures. So one of the comments that, or findings was that there were some landlords on the pathway who owe the house authority money who had not been sent over to the debt recovery because the procedures are kind of still being developed. And so that was something that we were able to communicate with them that we have the procedures in place. I'm working with the finance department to get those files together and they'll be sent over um, probably in the next few months. The second finding, um, these, well, they reviewed a few of our files. So we were our project-based and our health insurance voucher file. And it was determined that a few of the files did not contain citizenship eligibility documents. And so um, it, it is a, a issue of file review. We've been working a lot closely with the department um, on compliance. And uh, the team actually had a training today on citizenship eligibility documentation and what to do. They actually have a part two training next week. And so um, of all findings, these findings um, are findings that we've been working on to, to complete, to fix and to have a better procedure process moving forward.
So I think overall, um, it would have been great to have no findings, but only having two is still, is still a great, a great job. Um, there, I know a few house authorities have had twenty or more findings and stuff. Um, overall, I think the feedback was that we are a pretty well-run um, agency. Um, and even some of the things that were findings, we are already, we, before they were even findings, we had steps in place to, to remedy them, such as bringing in a, a compliance, um, a compliance company to review files and uh, putting in place that debt recovery program. And so I think Jennifer and Tiffany have definitely um, done a great job in working to clean up some of the challenges that our H C V program has had. And so we're heading in the right direction. So that letter was sent out to the entire board, so you will have it in your email directly from HUD, but we just wanted to provide a copy for you and, and today's information.
Once again, I think that speaks well to the leadership, you know, bringing in very competent people to do their job. And I think it's, I think that's expressed here today in the report. A lot of agencies uh, that I'm aware of in this state and uh, throughout the country, our size uh, agency and, and larger and smaller have a lot of trouble. There's a lot of trouble with agencies out there and I'm just so proud that we are one of the top agencies in the country.
That's good. I'm just wondering, um, do they have to find findings? Because people never have any findings or they just have to find something?
You know, I feel like they get paid to find something.
I'm just saying that it could have been perfect. So I'm just saying if they just have to find something, so it could be perfect. But that's why I.
No, I, I feel like they won't send them all down here to find nothing. It's okay though, it's always something to work on. Can be perfect. Um, so other big news, we opened our H C V waitlist on August nineteenth and that will close on August twenty-third. Again, just testament to how hard H C V and the entire team has been working. We cleared that waitlist in a year, so we're opening it, opening it again, taking, taking more people. Um, and so on August nineteenth through August twenty-third. And we have this, I'm going to put you on blast, Jolena, you may have to. We have a step-by-step tutorial that Jolena did and it is awesome. If you have people who are confused on how to operate the waitlist. Um, she took about a half a day and went over the video about three times. She had to keep re-recording it and re-recording it. But she did, she did a step-by-step tutorial that we have on the website as well as the YouTube page, Facebook page, that really walks people through how to apply for the waitlist, like what areas you need to fill out, what information you need to provide. And so go watch it just to embarrass her. Just kidding. So that closes on, on uh, August twenty-third. And we've got two billboards, we've got some Facebook marketing, we've got um, a lot just to get the word out about our, our waitlist opening. So um, Peyton created a really nice billboard, so look at that too. All right, on uh, August first, the youth bill program held their informational for the upcoming fall cohort, which mental toughness starts next week. So um, again, unbelievable numbers, a hundred attendees at uh, the informational. A hundred young people just again demonstrating like what a huge need our youth bill program is in the community. Um, and so we're excited, but we're only taking, what, fifteen this time?
Fifteen Champaign, uh, Tenor Banan.
Fifteen Champaign, Tenor Banan. So um, out of that one hundred, we've got to shrink it down to fifteen. So this would be a really, really, really hard cohort to decide, but it's okay. Um, some youth build um, training also occurred this month. Our uh, finance director, Miguel and Shavon attended a training in B C. Uh, it's a required mandatory um, D O L orientation for the new grant that they received. Um, and Shavon, we had news about, what is the new number that this D O L grant serves?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six. So if we prior, uh, prior to this uh, this year, we've been funding for eighty-four at 1.5 million. So we're still at 1.5 million, but they've dropped the number down to sixty-six. And so um, a few less young people that we can serve, but of, of course, we are always looking, seeking and um, securing additional funding to make sure that we continue to serve the same amount of youth in our community or as many as we possibly can. Um, and then I wanted to, you can go to the next slide because there was two slides over the thing. Um, wanted to give the board, and we try to do this every month, an overview of the, some of the supportive services that we have um, that we've been doing. Our L S S team has been working very hard. As, as fast as H C V is pulling and leasing up, H C V has to keep up with the supportive service need. And so um, I mean, L S S has to keep up with the supportive service need. And so in July of twenty twenty-four, uh, for the month of July, fifty-nine total families were served and fifty of those families were new admission and nine were current participants. And so thirty-two were provided with security deposit assistance and all thirty-two were new admission. So again, just showing the connection between us providing supportive services and being able to lease that quicker. Um, and so a total of thirty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars was spent on security deposits. Again, this uh, this, this funding comes directly from our reserves. Um, one of the things that HUD has been really working with us on is, is allocating our reserves and getting it spent to address our needs and leasing. And so we've been working hard to do that. So these numbers seem high, but um, they are supported by um, our field office and our N T W office. Um, we also had with eighteen application fees, a total of six hundred, uh, one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars was spent. Um, and then for families that are considered high need, we do help with furniture assistance, basically just beds. Um, uh, primarily beds, um, when, you know, anything that is an immediate need to get the family housed. And so thirteen hundred dollars was spent on beds in July. Um, and then I think that was a repeat slide. Let me see where I went backwards. I did go backwards. Um, other supportive services, around twenty-one hundred was spent on other supportive services such as utility assistance, bus passes, phone minutes and moving assistance. That's another um, thing that we are providing to some of our high-needs families. Um, if they need assistance with moving, um, or past the utility bills that could be, that could become a barrier to them um, getting housed in a new place. Um, and then landlord incentives, nine thousand three hundred and eight dollars was expended on landlord incentives in uh, July. So again, just showing, demonstrating that we are, you know, using our funding to meet the needs of the community um, along with incentivize and partner with our landlords to get available units for our clients. And that is the end of my report and I can take any questions if you have any. If not, then I'll have Miguel come up and talk about the finances.
Thank you. Yes, Gina. I'll be very quick. As usual, I want to mention who were our most significant dispersants for the month uh, out of our general fund. Cash, we renewed the insurance for Mohammed. Uh, we made a first mortgage payment for uh, the property of Douglas Square that was about $100. Uh, but really the most important dispersant is paying for the uh, N T D C operator. We actually did the last installment of a 75-year building, which was a hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred. And we also paid uh, why the uh, restoration fee of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred. That is uh, related to the zero remoting project. Uh, we, we'll be speaking that back, uh, but those are payments that have to be done as part of the process. As far as the real versus budget, they uh, have uh, slides today. I don't know uh, if anyone can recall that uh, when I, last month when I reset the June's figures, I mentioned that uh, we had actually uh, we're a little behind on the actual versus the budget until uh, the month of May. Uh, but in June, we caught up with this person that had just, had paid for us uh, one. But there wasn't like a, like the month to recurring one. Uh, I am pleased to say that in July, uh, we have kept pretty much the same break-even tendency. Uh, we're actually just zero point three percent uh, uh, difference from what the budget was. As far as the expenses, again, were pretty much under control. We have five point seven percent uh, over budget, which is uh, manageable. I was looking also at our uh, property management operation of rental components and actually we are somewhat uh, behind on, on uh, on revenues, about forty percent behind as of July. But we are actually obviously part of that with uh, a reduction from what was budgeted in, in expenses of about six point eight percent. I just wanted to mention, I, I looked uh, I looked at the audit report of Douglas Square. Said do a, an initial uh, entry for, for the purchase of, of the interest. Uh, so I ended up looking to look at the financial statements. They were, their auditor, auditors uh, actually uh, gave us, there's a lot of information that uh, that's going to be very useful for the accounting. I just want to mention that uh, since we uh, took over, uh, we've uh, collected about forty-six thousand dollars. And that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Miguel.
Here quickly, when you pay insurance for properties, do you pay them for a whole year?
Yes, well, I mean, the majority of, of our uh, properties are this big insurance with H A I. Mohammed is one of the ones that uh, was left from when we were uh, having Arma as our main insurance company. So this one, because it's $10,000, uh, we, we just paid that one with H A I we do install.
Okay, is there any questions about the financials for it? If not, I would entertain a motion uh, for approval in a second.
Some move.
Uh, roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski, yes. Commissioner McFarlane.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan, yes. Commissioner General. Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I'd like to ask one question before we uh, seek out uh, public comments on non-agenda items. Could you give us an update on that fire that we had over in Columbia?
Yes, I can. Um, so we have the, uh, I think we're working on getting quotes for the renovation right now. Um, and so once we get those quotes, we'll probably come back to the board to get an approval for the contract that that's selected.
We're going to start the chef building?
Yes.
Oh, that's good. Okay, uh, are there any uh, public comments on non-agenda items? Hearing none. Uh, there's no reason for our, our closed session.
No.
Okay, before we adjourn, I would just like to thank our, our guests and the presentation that they made today. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
I do have one more thing, Dr. Henry. So I just wanted to let, let the board know, remind the board and the community that the youth bill graduation is this Saturday, August twenty-fourth, from twelve o'clock to two P M. Um, so uh, we are going to be at the Orpheum and it is a ticketed event. And Jolena, I believe you put two tickets in each commissioner's um, packet. If you can make it, we would love to have you there. Um, and so just wanted to give that reminder. You've got how many grads, twenty, twenty? Nineteen, nineteen grads.
Okay, I'll save my, my little comments. Anyway, can I have a motion and a second for adjournment? It's been probably moved to second roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski, yes. Commissioner McFarlane.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Commissioner. Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.